Reminder that this is a business meeting. Therefore, the only dialogue, with the exception of public participation, will be between the elected municipal officials. We have a lot to cover tonight, but hopefully we do not take too much of your time. It is very important. It is not too impossible to take accurate notes when there is open dialogue going back and forth between the public and the elected officials. So therefore, I kindly ask that if you feel the need to express yourself during this council meeting, it may kindly be, kindly escort yourself out, so therefore it does not interrupt the meeting. And I hope that's fair. Is that fair, everyone? Okay, thank you. Thank you. And if you need some assistance, we can find that too. But I don't think that would be necessary. Before we start, um, somebody asked, Ms. Davis was offering whatever she's done through the Alder person.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor, what can you please call for?
Alderwoman Druwinski.
Present.
Alderwoman Chapman. Alderwoman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Key.
Present.
Alderman Randallow. Alderman Rogers.
Present.
Mayor Clark and Shirley Druwinski. Present.
When the mayor?
Do we have any ministers in the house? Would you kindly lead us in prayer, please? Yes, or if you want to go to the podium. Thank you for volunteering here. Please ask everyone to shut off their phones. I'll get myself.
May God our Lord and our Savior, gracious heavenly Father, who comes before you this evening, provide me with interest this room to officiate what is going to be celebrated tonight. Father, we just trust you. We count you as sovereign and holy. And allow no miss spoken words to take place. And I pray that all hearts of mind will be able to afford that we do to doing things that are in the best interest of all concerned within Harvey. And so, Lord, we commit this time to you, and we ask you again that you would be treasured. I pray this day in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
Mayor Chair, can we give our names?
Oh, I'm sorry. Herbert King, please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Glenn James Watson. Thank you. And worthy nations, we request, and we pray, to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a motion to, um, table the minutes, city council minutes, from January twenty-second. I know some people got it in their packet, some did, they gave it on Thursday. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone had time to read it. Did you feel comfortable you had time to read it, the minutes?
Yes.
Are you prepared to vote on it?
Yes.
To make a motion, ask for a motion. Motion, Chair. Motion granted. Uh, Mayor Clerk?
Alderman Randallow.
Aide.
Oh.
For the minutes.
For the minutes.
For the minutes.
Aide.
Alderman Key.
No.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman. Alderwoman Smith? Alderwoman Druwinski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I would like to make a motion to, request a motion, um, to approve the payment for the bills. Liz?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Chair. Uh, yes, we had an opportunity to go over three bills. This is from, uh, January eighth, January twenty-second, and also February twelfth. Make motion to approve all three.
You need a second?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Rogers, second by Alderman. Randallow.
Alderman Rand- Alderman Randallow.
Aide.
Alderman Key.
Aide.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman. Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Druwinski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, approval of ordinance and resolutions. I did ask, somebody did ask if I can do a brief explanation. This is a little bit unusual, um, but in this meeting tonight, we are discussing the water piping, the inter, uh, under, the intergovernmental agreements with, uh, MWRD and the city of Harvey with the piping, who's responsible. Okay, I would like to make a motion, I would like to seek a motion for approval for the resolution authorizing the intergovernment agreement. Motion, Chair.
Point of information, present.
There's already been a motion and a vote on the floor, so I deny that request. Thank you. There is a motion, and we're seeking a second. Oh, I am so sorry. Okay, please take the rope.
Alderman Randallow.
Aide.
Alderman Key.
Point of information.
Come on.
What has my word?
I, I, I realize that.
Sorry, Mayor Chair. This is point of information. This is my chair.
We've already had a motion, we've already had a vote.
Come on.
Alderman Keys, and so therefore you could either support him or deny.
Well, this is not a point of order, this is point of information. And I just need a clarification before I make my vote. Is there a problem with that?
Go ahead and ask me a question.
Okay, first of all, this resolution, this is the same resolution that we passed in September.
That is not correct.
Okay, all right. What is the, that's the difference right there. But there are many questions that are going on with the situation of the funding for the downward slope. This is a contract that we had already signed and already agreed on. Now, we're saying that we need to add more additional piping and more additional funds. Is that going to cost the city more money?
Alderman Keys, we have the ability within a seven-day period to answer your questions and seek finding. These meetings at the city council are for voting purposes. Did you submit your questions to the mayor's office, and were they answered?
No, I did not. I didn't feel like doing it because this is the purpose of the council meeting. I thought I could bring it.
Then I would ask you right now, um, sir, if you would like to either confirm, deny, or abstain from vote, because that is where we are at, at this moment.
Okay, that's all. No.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman? Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Druwinski?
Yes.
Motion carried, and that's resolution three zero six eight. Three zero six eight.
Please.
I ain't saying I'm a while, that's it. That's all I say.
Okay. Seeking a motion for the resolution authorizing the execution of the agreement with the community hub and between the city in order to its construction.
Soo.
Second.
Alderman Rogers? Alderman Randallow.
Alderman Randallow? Alderman Key?
Point of information.
Sorry, no. Denied. We're in the middle of a vote. I let.
Point of order?
No.
I can't say nothing.
Not at this point. No, I'm sorry.
Alderman Key?
No.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman? Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Druwinski?
Yes.
Motion carried, that's resolution three zero six nine. Three zero six eight.
Okay, this is an ordinance, the next one, establishing, or re-establishing, establishing city committees and designated members. I'm seeking the motion to approve, um, ordinance. Motion, Chair. First by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman, uh, Tyler Rogers.
Alderman Key? Alderwoman Druwinski?
Yes.
Alderman Randallow? Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman? Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carried, and that's ordinance three four eight six. Three four eight six.
Okay, before we get started on public comment, I, I just want to say, there's been some, I received, uh, a text message today saying about why am I evicting people? And I have to be honest, there is no eviction today. This has nothing to do with evicting anyone. This is an intergovernmental agreement regarding the scope of responsibility. Just like every other partnership in the intergovernmental agreement we host in the city of Harvey or any other city. So this is just a scope, a scope of responsibility outlining, so everybody stays in their lane. No one is going to cross and say, well, at a later date. So this is what we are doing today. So I just want to make sure that everyone has a clear understanding of that. Um, so we're prepared to go with, uh, public meeting. I do want to ask that everyone speak slowly into the mic. Please try not to yell, because it's really hard for the clerk to, uh, to take the minutes and the notes and record you exactly what you're saying because of the speaker system. But I understand that people are cussing, so we will do our best on our end. Um, the first person and the person of a way, of the public comment chief. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city council unadjed items and other city-related business. In order to accomplish the business, not the agenda, to be respectable to everyone's type, council members will not engage in the dialogue with the individuals, members, or members, the audience, and no immediate reaction will be taken at the public com- um, comment issue. Now, what this means is that we, we're not going to be slow. But that does not mean that you do not have a right to reach out to your aldermen or to the mayor. We want to hear from you, just like the individual who had the seeking clarification on tonight's meeting. We want that. Okay, so we, we ask, um, I'm going to have, uh, Mayor Clerk call out the names. And, um, we have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Give me up that one. So, where shall I start? So the, um, the intergovernmental agreement. How was it not explained to the people when the responsibility is being passed on to us? That's something that is not being clarified with the community. So if, since they said in the September seventh meeting that they had already done their engineering, and that was the perfect spot, now the story is that there's a slope and it has to be, all this stuff has to be done, and who's going to pay for it? Guess what? It's us, and y'all just voted for it.
Right.
If I'm, if I'm correct, y'all just voted for that intergovernmental agreement on the responsibility, you just voted, said it yourself, the responsibility. So the responsibility is left on us. Why? Is it because it's not bothering anybody of the council? Because I'm, I'm assuming from what I was said and told, that y'all don't even stay here with it. So it don't matter, I guess. Everybody got homes outside, like Arkansas, Sherrville, all these different places. And why would MWRD be, um, want to do something with y'all anyway? When I hear y'all on federal investigation? Who, who, who would do that? Yeah, let the people know. Let them know everything. He's trying to point a border, I mean, I don't see why he couldn't point a discussion or point a border. Excuse me? Did you say, what's that?
One minute left.
Oh. Um, so, I mean, I, I don't understand why he couldn't get the clarification before it was voted on. That, um, I mean, and you said, be nice, I'm being nice. I'm really being nice. But here it is, people are losing their homes, and on top of that, you're going to make us pay for it.
Right.
We got to pay for it. And everybody just smiling and yes, so nice, and sooo, it's awful. It's not cool, because fifty-year res- thirty and fifty-year residents losing their home.
Ten seconds.
And then we have to pay for it. Make it make sense.
Right.
This is the one, I mean, the one, like, Carita Pool, bingo.
God bless you, Father. I'm Pastor Mark, I'm Pastor of Laskon for God's Love Ministry. I also want to acknowledge first, Black History Month. And I guess most of the people here don't know that I had the first black established business downtown Harvey in nineteen seventy.
All right.
I've been in, kind of staying out of the way, but I came to council meeting trying to save a hundred jobs, not knowing the ins and outs of the property at American Kitchen. Mayor could have fought against me, but took me in his office and told me that the community center was last cause all the time. My building was connected to the community center, and they took it and made it basketball court, not knowing that all of their properties belonged to Laskon Ministry. You know, going through two administrations, twenty years, not knowing this property belonged to Laskon. But I'm too old, I don't have time to be mad, I want to move forward. Mayor Clark had a right to stand against me, but instead, he used integrity to do and speak what is right. I believe now Harvey do have hope. I've lost years out of my life in working with the ministry, but I thank God, God put me back where he wants me to be, and united we stand. Thank you.
Carita Pool, followed by Herbert.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I am that person, or one of the people that was losing their homes, that's the parents' father. So I have my father here, eighty-eight, mostly eighty-nine, his ninth birthday, so we're in this, one of them. Um, I can never imagine when my daddy came from Mississippi, um, north, you know, to Chicago Heights and then to Harvey for a better life and fairness than we would ever imagine that we lose his home.
That's better, yeah.
You see, as an African-American, it means that we will never be able to pass down generational wealth or have generational wealth. My parents have been decent residents. They paid their property taxes for both homes. It is being taken, um, and it feels as though it's unfair. He thought he would have, you know, be able to live in his home until, you know, his dying days, as many, you know, you, you know, you, um, retire, you know, and things like that, including Mr. Dorothy. Who, you know, they just wanted to, you know, live out their days in their homes that they built, um, paid property taxes for, did upgrades and all of that. But that's being taken away, and it doesn't seem like it's fair to us. We all have contributed. We paid taxes once again, we've been model citizens, and we've been decent resident. Um, it's as though we never, he's never loved Mississippi. This now consumes our lives, as you can imagine, on a daily basis. The house that he and my mother built, um, there will never be, there will never be enough compensation for our memories or emotional investments that we made in our homes. Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mazurka.
Followed by Jackie Clark.
Love the talk, sir.
No, it's you.
My name is Mazurka, former trustee of the Harvey Public Library from 2015 to 2021. And, um, I have some concerns that I'd like to address the city council. Uh, the way that you guys are doing business, uh, you're sanitizing the truth from the process. I think we're the only city or village or town that practices this. If you go to Evansdale or Homewood, you will get a little bit more information about what the aldermen are voting on, and what the mayor's put on the agenda, or whoever put it on there. You don't get that. It's an after effect. Uh, that's not good. Because when you do that, that means that you've decided what you're going to do. You don't want anybody questioning anything. You think you're above that, and you know it's not right, but you're doing it because you can, okay? Not because it's right, but because you can, and that's not the way to do business. We don't know what's going on by this, uh, abbreviation or summary of what it is that you, you're trying to do in our city. Uh, the agreement with Metropolitan Water Reclamation, the, the, the new agreement versus the old agreement, what changed in it, and what's so bad about saying what's really going on? We're going to find out eventually. Okay, so then that just makes you look bad. It's like you're trying to hide something. Do you really understand what it is that you're signing? Do you really understand what it is that you're doing? Okay? Who's cure you're taking from? Is this coming from Clark? You know, I asked you before the meeting to try to give us some information. He asked for point order, in order to point information too, and you shut him down. That, that wasn't necessary. That was not necessary. You've taken the playbook from Clark. I have to give you an F, okay? From President Pro Tim for taking this place. I have to, because you did exactly what I asked you not to do.
Right.
Moving on to the next.
One minute left.
Okay, moving on to the next issue of the bidding process. So the people walked out in the last process, and then you found somebody else to do the project. What happened to rebid the process because of the air, the work that was done on the six facilities that you started on that were incomplete? The money, the materials that you paid out for, and the construction costs and stuff? Why didn't you rebid that out over again and get a different price? And then the price that you, you guys aren't doing stuff right. You know, and, and what you're doing is, is you're doing it based off of the lack of the knowledge of people and the understanding of what's going on. You got them coming in here, wh- 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 what's going on? What's the secret? What are you afraid of people to know? You know, so I'm asking for some true transparency, and you get an F, Charlie, okay?
All right.
Jackie Clark, followed by Ryan Smith.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here representing my mother, this retired city clerk, talking. Clark, she was unable to be here tonight because she recently was discharged from the State I C U, also representing my father. They have been residents of Harvey Two Thirty Eight Homes for fifty years, actually nineteen seventy-four. They have repeatedly, over the last twelve calendar months, met with the mayor about concerns with property north of Harvey Two Thirty Eight Homes. And so the property has collapsed on their property. I injured myself trying to clean this stuff up. Now, we've made, uh, I came to have it documented on January the sixteenth at the mayor's office. Uh, he was unavailable. I must say that the person that was at the window was considering. However, no one has contacted them by mail, by phone, by email, or text. And so she wanted me to come down here so it could be recorded during a live session, and I forgot to speak to all the residents, didn't I? Uh, so that it could be recorded on the document. The house has collapsed. As I said, I have injured myself because they are unable to get out to clean it. And so they want to know what the city of Harvey, the mayor's office, because if he recorded the visitations from my father, it should be documented. And they want to know what the city of Harvey, building and planning its recent sanitation, who's ever responsible for what actions are going to be taken. Okay?
All right. All right, Jackie.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Ryan. I'm addressing my behalf of the Harvey Historical Society. Uh, I do, I want to, I guess say I'm thankful. Uh, my great uncle, Fred Wasso, was able with his parents to, uh, they started a little farm stand which grew into a grocery store that some of you might know, uh, pretty well-known in Harvey. Uh, they were able to own several homes. They, uh, they raised kids here. Um, actually, my mother, uh, when they were little, they, um, they stayed in, I think, up in a two flat on Lincoln, you know, and they were all having kids together and everything. So, I mean, Harvey has a lot of great history for me and my family. I, I know many of you has some great history. Um, I'd like to think that we could continue that, um, in honor, I, I feel like it's such a, um, a tragedy. I want to say, should I say in honor of Black History Month, that we have a mostly black government evicting black citizens who have lived here and proudly came from the South, where they encountered, as Ms. Carita told us, a lot of prejudice and, and worked their asses off, really. You know, excuse my language, but to come up here and own property, and now today, you all sit here? You're mostly African-American. Hey, I'm the white guy. I'll fight for anybody. I don't, I don't care about race, but I'm just saying, it looks really bad. Is that what Mr. King's dream is about? So you could kick these fine people out of their residences? Did you know, did you know there are widows, uh, that, you know, they would want to come, but they're afraid for their heart condition? They want to come and, and tell, and tell you how, um, you're horrible and you're hypocrites, and however much money you're getting offered to allow this deal, um, you know, basically you'll burn hell and it's not worth it, but, but they don't want, they're, they're, they don't have a heart attack, you know? They're elderly widows. So I don't know, I can't think of a, a, a worse way to commemorate Black History Month than to, um, to say, you know, look, look at these folks getting kicked out of their own homes. So I might not be of a darker skin color, but you know what? I'll stand up for my neighbors, because I think that's what Fred Wasso would have done.
All right.
We can do better. We can do better. Um, and then as far as the other, uh, stuff, I mean, do we still, have we gotten a report from the treasurer?
No.
Do we know where our tax fund is going?
No.
So I don't, why is everyone so happy when we come to the city council meetings? I, I don't, this, this is a city that's in financial crisis. And instead of addressing the crisis, we're kicking residents out of their homes for a retention pond that could go anywhere else? I mean, we have no lack of empty space in Harvey. Right? Okay, so I, I just wanted to do a reality check there. I wish I had, you know, a happier way to commemorate Black History Month, so, you know, maybe we could turn that around. Thank you.
All right.
Many, uh,
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mabel King.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, uh, told aldermen that, uh, you know, I can support him and I was coming to the meeting, uh, because I know a lot of questions I can answer here and I just wanted to make sure. As a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Ritzke, Mayor Pro Tem, it's a pleasure for me to be able to talk and nobody answer. So, you know, I can say what I wanna say and y'all ain't gonna argue with me and I don't wanna argue anymore. I'm too old. But I just wanna say a few things. Number one, um, as it relates to the building that's been there looking, adding to the eyesores in our neighborhoods, I'll be following up with my alderperson. I need you to be able to help me understand what's going on. Um, so I follow up with you, uh, Ms. Smith, and, and maybe you can clarify some things because that's the proper way I understand to get, to get information from this thing. As it relates to my neighbors and friends who are living in their homes, it breaks my heart because 50% of our homes in Harvey are already vacant and, and in terrible, you know, shape. And to see the city council deciding that they wanted to dig a hole for $10 million and instead of digging it where all these empty places, the places that need to be remodelized, we choose the houses that people have taken care of.
Right.
It, it, it's a tragedy and it is Black History Month, but I know this is not the place to get an answer. I'm just here to say to everybody that I remember when the citizens in the black community would come together and raise issues and decide what needs to happen, have those discussions that need to be had and then come to the city council. And when the city council didn't listen to the black community, I know so did. But today, it seems like it doesn't matter what color the city council is. It matters what character the city council has. What's in your heart? If you can't take care of the people who vote for you and pay the taxes, who are you taking care of? Business people? When we said we'd govern in Harvey? Well, yeah, there are some developers who are gonna make money. So construction companies that are gonna make money? But what's happening to the people that you were elected to represent? So my suggestion is that the people join us. For example.
Your time is up.
Oh, I'm so sorry. One announcement quickly. We are meeting on the 24th of February to continue the history project that we are going to infuse true history, black history and true history. And so we are beginning to do that. We have one meeting on the coldest day of the year over the last three years, my, uh, on Martin Luther King's birthday. This one will be on the 24th. It's in the little church on Sealy Street in the fourth ward that was built by the hands of the children of former slaves when they came here for a better life and they built their churches and their homes and their businesses. We've gone really far backwards, black community, uh, reading the history of why and how every history. Because if you don't know your history, you're not gonna be here.
Before I get to the coffee, I won't be hollering today because I love to see, I took a picture twice every time. I took a picture of you sitting in a seat with the mayor. It's a beautiful picture to look at that. Our city is a graceful coalition of citizens and we must operate in that way if we want our city to grow. But now I'm gonna go to the negative part. My time's up. Okay. Where's Melville King, 6th Ward, 216 Canyon Boulevard, Harvey, Illinois? I know that there is a lot of things going on here, a lot of problems. But one of the things I'm gonna ask this question, when people are ordering demolition and buildings, what I was talking about and those kind of things, how does, what is that process? Why don't the citizens know who starts the project, why they're doing it and how it's being done? Why do our alderpersons, everything get a blank brain and do not everybody, everybody doesn't have meetings? And I'll say like my friend Kofi has meetings and I go to her meetings, she calls for the form of different people coming. The other thing, who is responsible for the city heart? When we talk about freedom of religion, we have Muslims, Protestants, Jewish people, Catholics and all of that. And state with me in a few months when I was hoping my mayor would be here to say this. There's no one attacking your religion. What they're attacking is the citizens and the First Amendment, and I have it right here. Congress will make double law respecting the establishment of religion. That is federal law and that is also law and we fall under the federal law. So we can have any religion. I'm a man, I'm a minister, any Zion church or a Dane ministry. But I cannot, if I was in office here and alderperson whatever, put one religion over the other. I have my religion and I can profess that, but I can't do it. So that's a smokescreen. I'm gonna let the officers know. The officers know at one time we have, the officers were coming in here, we had all these officers being trained, all this stuff being going on. But what happens to those officers and what happened to the money for those officers? Another big question, all of you alderpersons should open up your brains and think about this. Where did the money go for those training officers and who was benefiting from what harm between the nodders hitting Onward, Flossmore, Crestwood and all of that? I love my officers. I was the chief of police of Phoenix back in the second when I came out of Vietnam. I know police work a lot. I've had two murder cases and all of that. I've seen people killed in the war. But one thing I don't understand, why is court and government are not letting people know where their money's going? Instead of us writing about the houses and the digging and all that kind of stuff, let's ask the question. What happened to the deep tunnel project? Why can't they run their water from the deep tunnel project, which is by my house, my pipe? Today I can let those people live in their house. Let my people go. I don't believe, I don't think that the City of Harvey is gonna act right. I'm gonna have a dream that the City of Harvey is not gonna work with fellas and thieves and ravers and murderers. I'm thinking I have a dream that the City of Harvey is gonna operate in that kind of manner. And I don't blame the council that keep here. I know people hit the edge with what I say. I understand him. But I'm telling you the truth. I've been here for a lot of years. I ran for office in law several times to that, nine times in a man's. And he knows what the deal is. So, so what I'm telling you is this, and, and I'm saying this, and I say it politically. I'm running again. Why I'm running again? Because I wanna change. You know, who's responsible for the five years that the treasury reports not being responsible? Five years and we had no report. How can that be in the state of Illinois when you drive down the street of Harvey, try to drive without your stickers and see my fine, what's gonna happen? If you don't have your stickers by February 15th, guess what? You gonna pay that budget. So why can't the city pay its budget every morning?
Right.
You expect money to come in, but you won't let the citizens know where the money is going. Who's responsible for making no decisions of the location of that place? Is it the residents people or is it the council? Who is responsible? Who is responsible?
All right, let him finish.
I tell you something. Thank you. Okay, a lot more? Next time.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, I appreciate everybody that came out for the night. You know, hopefully you're not confused or dis, you know, disappointed about the excuses that we got. This is the way to do things. When we, as any ordinance, it's always good for clarification. And that's all I really ask. And, um, I gotta respond back to my residents that are not even on 153rd and murder with their concern about the situation because they worried about if this could happen to them. So it's my job to ask the questions and if there's been discovered, uh, downward slope where the land tapped into the place and we have to do additional work, which is gonna be additional expenses.
Why can't we simply just move the project somewhere else?
Right.
Or we wouldn't have to worry about this.
Yes.
Why does it have to be that way? And whatever reason it is, it still just deserves an explanation. Not just, okay, you can't say anything. We're just gonna do this. We're just gonna roll with it. You know, and that's not how, that's, that's a, that's a dictatorship.
Thank you.
That's not leadership.
Right.
All right, no comments, guys. We're gonna have to end this.
I'm not, I, I didn't say nothing.
No, that's all of us. Go ahead. Go ahead, finish.
Okay, thank you. And those are the questions that I was asking, simple questions. And when it comes to the sub hubs, you know, the stations that we're building, looking at the information, because y'all are not privileged to the information, but the aldermen are. Additional project is gonna cost 1.25 million for six hub stations to be built. Now, in the notes that I have, it said three hub stations for 1.2 million dollars. Whereas the other half of the money, you know, how, how did this even come about? Also, I can understand when we have contract negotiations and things don't work out and we have to move on to another contract. But did we pay their money first? You know, if somebody's working on your house, you always have to give them a down payment. You have to give them a down payment, half down and half when the job is finished. So if we'd have paid their money already to have built the sub spaces, did we lose that money or did we get that money back?
We wanna know.
Now, the people that were voting on the new contract.
We wanna know.
See, it's only been, I've been counting my time. It's only been 20 seconds. I, I, I just said a minute. Okay, well, we got people recording this. But anyway, just get the positive information, get the information that the people deserve. We the taxpayers, we the people. And just give them the information to make them feel better. Everybody didn't come here to sit down and just hear 15 minutes of, okay, this, this, and don't have another set. You gonna leave out, what you gonna feel in your heart when you leave? You feel you really accomplished something? But you did because you're here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you know, I just want, want, wanna make a few comments as an alderman and as the mayor Pro Tem. All the aldermen receive their packets a week before. If you have any questions regarding the agenda items and your alderman cannot or will not answer that question, please call me. I get the packet. I read the packet. And I can explain the packet to my residents. So I asked you, if you are confused, what we were talking about was an intergovernment agreement. If anyone has a question, this comes out on Monday. Feel free to call your alderman the Monday before the meeting. We all get the packets. We have the opportunity to contact the city, the mayor's office within one week. I guarantee you, when I get questions I cannot answer, I contact the mayor's office. Then I get back to the residents, not during the city council meeting. The kid, city council meeting's purpose is for voting, yea or nay. Do we move forward or we do not? Not for discussion. Some people say as taxpayers, the taxpayers were going to pay for this. This is going to be done through the exercise of grants. The majority, or if not all, from what I was told. The hubs, we had to start from scratch for potential legal obligations. So these are questions and answers that your aldermen, if they put in the request, will forget providing the information in writing. And if the city cannot answer it, I guarantee you the attorney could. So it's not like we are sitting up here blindly, being aimlessly. We take your vote sincerely and respectfully and exercise and do our due diligence to answer and reply what each word represents and needs. I will not sit up here, not for one reason, and lie to you. I have nothing to lose. Accept your respect and that means more to me than sitting here. Now, there's a few of you I would like to talk to who made some comments that I would like to talk after this meeting if you would be so kindly and meet with me. But I am an open book. You are welcome to attend my meetings. Everybody is welcome. I announced it. So rest assured, your aldermen or your alderpersons, the majority of us read and comprehend these packets. And if I cannot comprehend like any other alderman here, if for whatever reasons I'm not seeing it for the moment, which happens frequently, I'm not ashamed to say, I seek out. Not the day of the council meeting because this administration has put in layers and methods. So we are not wasting your time and arguing back and forth. So with that, I say thank you and happy Valentine's Day. A motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Alderman Cameron, Alderman Smith, Alderman Smith, Alderman King, Alderman Mandela, Alderman Rodman, Alderman.
So there you have it. Once again, no, no information, no answers, voting yes on what the mayor proposes and that's it. All the dorm residents, do you wanna be on film? So what, what did you think about the meeting?
I don't wanna be on film.
Well.
No? Tell the camera, what do you think? Do you think, were they good at answering Harvey citizens' questions?
Of course not. Of course not.
Okay.
We have the same problem about here in Dalton, very controlled, very, um, I cannot say, not democratic, but it's very, uh, like we're in a, a foreign country with dictatorship. And this is what they're trying to pull upon us as white people. And we need to stand up and fight. And, and Ryan, for you to be a white man to stand up is, is really, um...
So you're, wait a minute. So you're saying you got the same thing in Dalton? Get out of here. Get out of here.
We had the same problems in Dalton, correct?
We're not communicating with the, the people, as far as I can see, and, and they're not really making options. And they should have options. They need to move to retention. They should move to retention someplace else, find someplace else. Because they should be trying to satisfy the residents.
Yeah.
Because this doesn't make it, you gonna tear down, I don't even know what to tear down. I need to do a little more.
This is a bomb. I mean, I know people, my grandparents thought about buying a house out here
Right.
in, um, Harvey back in, I think it was in the 40s, but they went up to Michigan and bought a resort.
Oh, okay.
Yes, but this, and then they lived in a rented home in Chicago.
Right.
Yes, um, and I could just see our family home because we still have our family home up in Michigan,
Right.
in South Avenue, Michigan, that, um...
So you still have your family home?
Yes.
Oh, yay. Okay, good.
And so, but I could just imagine if they bought that home here and that was to happen.
Right. And then where does all your family wealth go, you know, and your memories?
Yes, yes, yes. They're wiped out. It's like losing fancy kitchens.
Right, right.
You'll never get them back, ever.
Right, right. No, thank you, ladies, for coming and thank you for sharing. So we say, you know, you noticed some similarities between this meeting and Dalton?
Yeah. Yeah, like you can't, like you can't, um, you can't respond and that's kinda like bad. Um, then you have your alderments and they say they get a packet and they're telling the residents to talk on a packet that they don't even see.
Right, right.
So how can you tell them, you know, this is what you need to be looking at and you can respond to us back if the residents don't know?
Right.
They're going over there.
And I wanted to yell out, do you have the same problem in Dalton? I wanted to yell out to say, when the aldermen ask, they don't get answers.
No.
They always say, well, ask before the meeting. Ask before the meeting.
Yeah, but the thing is...
But they do, and then our aldermen don't get answered.
What is the time limit? They don't have no time limit. They just tell you, do this, you know, say, Monday before five o'clock, we need to get a response back from you.
Right, right.
They never say anything like that. They say, oh, we gave you the packet, but you never, you never did respond with your whatever. What's the deadline?
Great, great. No, no, totally. Well, thank you, ladies, for coming.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Okay, Ms. Chappal, so what is your reaction? How do you think the meeting went?
I think the meeting went very foul to the left. Um, they did not give clarity of what they were doing and what they were voting on. The people had no idea. But, um, and of course, they never let Fourth or Second War speak. So since the Second wasn't here, and the Fourth asked to, to speak, he was denied.
Hmm.
Um, he was treated as if he didn't even exist. So, um, overall, it was a zero. If, you know, we want to go numbers, it's, it was a zero. It wasn't, it wasn't fair. The people will be losing their homes on top of that. We will have to pay for the, um, the piping. The piping, right. The piping replacement of the lead, the lead piping infrastructure replacement.
And they never explained that either, did they?
And they never explained that.
So we still don't understand why.
We still don't understand why.
But now, even though the mayor promised this would all be paid for by the MWRD, now, um, we're going to have to, um, now we know for sure, we're gonna have to pay.
Yeah, we're gonna have to pay for it.
So that's, that's another lie.
Another lie. On top of the two hundred that they already told.
Right. Right.
So you be the judge.
She's for, uh, I just feel really bad for the residents that are, are... Especially the elderly ones. Like, in my comments, I think I, I, I really meant it. I mean, I think that they worry about their heart condition. Otherwise, I think they would come out.
Yeah.
But it's so emotional. How can you not be emotional if you live somewhere for fifty years?
And then to, to see some, to sit in someone's face and they lie to you.
Right, right. Or they laugh during the meeting.
Yeah, and they laugh during the meeting as if it's just hilarious.
Right, that you're losing your house for no reason. It's, it's crazy, Miss, so...
You know, so, but again, I stand on what I say. Ryan stands on what he says. And we'll get, we're, we're gonna get some type of clarity somewhere.
Right.
And if we have to take it to the courts, it's gonna go to the courts.
Right.